So we are going to call the meeting to order. We're a couple of minutes after seven o'clock, so apologies for the delay. And just we're setting up our live stream option for the folks at home to tune in as well. I'd like to start by asking councillors if they have items to add to the agenda. I do have a couple of things, but I'll kind of put it out to councillors first to get started with that. Any items added? And we don't have buttons this evening that we're playing with here, so just put your hand up.
Yeah, so Remembrance Day awareness case.
All right, Remembrance Day. Okay, so could I have a show of hands from councillors to add that item to the agenda? All right, thank you. So we have consensus with that one. Any other items? Okay, I'm going to ask councillors for a couple of items. First is congratulations to a local CBU honorary degree recipient. If I could have a show of hands to add that item to the agenda? Okay, thank you. We have consensus there. And then the second item is a letter of support for the Straight Area Chamber of Commerce Low Carbon Communities Educational Grant. Could I have a show of hands to add that to the agenda, please? All right, perfect. So we have consensus on those two items. So any further additions to the agenda? Okay, so hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda be approved.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a seconder on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, councillor Diggden. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thanks very much. The next item on the agenda is the review of minutes from the last committee of the whole meeting, which was on October 12th. Those minutes were provided to us in our council packages in advance. And just wondering if there are any errors or omissions to report? Okay, so hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Councillor Diggden? Could I have a seconder?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Councillor Sean Sampson? Okay, so any further discussion on the minutes?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, now we get to the fun part of our agenda. Get to welcome our guests in the gallery this evening. So welcome Laura Emery and Claire Rankin with Eastern County's Regional Library. They're going to provide us with a presentation this evening, and we're looking forward to hearing from you. So the floor is yours.
Good evening, Warden Mambraket, councillors, Mr Marchand, and community members. I appreciate the opportunity to update you on library services for Richmond County. For those that may be unfamiliar with our organisation, Eastern County's Regional Libraries is one of nine regional library systems in the province of Nova Scotia. It's a registered charity created under provincial legislation, the Libraries Act. I will refer to it as ECRL for ease of communication throughout the presentation. Since 1969, ECRL has provided library services to Inverness, Richmond, and Geisborough counties. As you can see from the image, ECRL is the largest geographic library region in the province, with the lowest total population per square kilometer. This is our most unique feature as a library region. The geography and the population distribution of the region define both the funding ECRL receives and influences the shape and nature of our service structure. And as you'll know, Richmond County is the largest and most densely populated area that ECRL serves. Here you can see our service locations, both current and upcoming. We are scheduled to open a new location in Shetty Camp early in 2022. Now, ECRL is governed by a library board made up of our six municipal representatives, two provincial appointees, which are both currently vacant, and one board appointee. We're hoping to hear very soon about new provincial appointments to our board, and I hope that we see an appointment from your area. It would be several years since we've had public representation from Richmond County, so that would be an exciting new development. As you're aware, ECRL's municipal partners appoint members to the board to govern, oversee finances, and policies of the organisation. ECRL is funded by the Nova Scotia Department of Communities, Culture, Tourism, and Heritage, and by our participating municipalities, and by our own fundraising activities. In addition to serving on the board, municipal partners play a tremendously key role in public library service because a public library requires the support of a municipal unit to pay the cost of managing and operating a library facility. This partnership is summarised in this chart. An important note about this is that public libraries have been mandated as public sector bodies, along with municipal units, to make their services fully accessible. So ECRL is currently working on developing an accessibility plan, and will be reaching out to our municipal partners to work with them to maintain or improve the accessibility of library facilities. ECRL unfortunately has the second lowest library budget of any library region in the province. This chart helps illustrate the provincial formula funds populations, and it funds them at different rates, rather than funding specific service levels. And this is a significant issue, as populations that are right next door to each other can be funded at a different rate. For example, our neighbouring library regions, Cape Breton Regional Library and the Picto-Aniganish Regional Library, receive 41,000 per 2,200 people, whereas ECRL receives 37,000 per 2,200 people. And it would add up to quite a difference in funding if we were to receive the same rate as those that live in Victoria County. I have never gotten a clear answer from government about why the formula is structured in such a way. This may be something the council might consider bringing to government's attention and asking why. So that's our key funding issue. The municipality is the second largest funder and has the second largest population that we serve, which is why we're very happy that we've been able to improve the funding situation this budget year for Richmond County. The Nova Scotia Provincial Library has communicated the implementation of the municipal funding increase for libraries is still on track for 2022, which means a significant increase for the municipality. We'd like to work with you to ensure that the increase in funding is most beneficial to your residents, and certainly a great future use of that money might be additional staffing for a new larger location in St Peters, which I'm sure you've heard some about and will hear more about. This gives you a visual representation of our partners. The size of the circle is proportional to the population of the municipal unit and the corresponding funding provided by that municipal unit. And what is important for you to appreciate is that despite the differences in population and funding provided, all partners at the board table sit with an equal vote. This is why the board's decision to provide all municipal funders with an equitable return on their mandated contribution was so important, as it now ensures that the populations which generate the funding enjoy the benefits of that funding and local geographic library service. So this is a huge change for us, and very positive for your municipality. Okay, services available to your residents. Naturally, I want everyone to promote what the library offers to the community. We have regional services, borrow by mail and digital library services, and these are advantageous because they can reach people in their homes. ECRL has a toll-free number, 1-855-787-7323. Users can call to ask for books or other materials they want to be sent to them via the mail. Now, this service can reach offline people. You just need to have the phone and a mailing address, which is really critical. We don't want to leave anyone out, right? So, or if you do have internet access, you can go online in our catalogue and you can select borrow by mail as an option for delivery. And this is great for people who've dealt with health challenges or still have those concerns during the pandemic. Additionally, we added an excellent suite of digital library services. I encourage council to check it out. If you read the Chronicle Herald or you read the Cape Breton Post, you can read it every day electronically for free with your library card. We've got downloadable books, audiobooks, but we now have downloadable movies, television. We've got car repair. We've got consumer reports for product reviews. We have LinkedIn Learning, so we have excellent learning opportunities for people looking to improve their job skills and learn the latest thing about computers and how to advertise on Facebook. So it's actually something that's very equivalent to an urban centre, and is really an equitable service in that way. Like it is comparable to what you would get into Halifax. So we're very proud of that. That was part of what we did with the additional funding. And those services cover everyone. In terms of local geographic services, our staff are essential, okay? Because they are helping the public navigate and learn to use our services, which can be kind of, you know, complex. And they're particularly important for library users who do not use the internet or computers. We have a lot of seniors who read passionately but may not be online or find our systems overly complex. So they're very important for those folks. And they spend a great deal of their time helping people find books to read and selecting the materials they want to enjoy. Now, we have a tonne of services. For example, we share all of our materials between any location. So we've got 80,000 items. Your residents can pick whatever they want that we have. And we also have an interlibrary loan service, so we will help people get things from Halifax and other library regions, and even across Canada. So we really are that connection point to culture and information. All right. So, items borrowed by users. Now, this includes physical items at your branches. And this graph gives you an idea of our recovery from the pandemic. Things are on the way back up. Services are returning to normal, which is very happy for us. What is not reflected here is that your residents can also use borrow by mail, and they can also use the digital services, but we can't break those stats out for you. They are a holistic thing, and it's very difficult to do because we don't control the data at that level. So this gives you a story about your branches. Additionally, if you look at the wifi and the wireless hours used, there's two things that we're representing in these two graphs. One is when people connected, and two is how long they stayed on when they connected. How many hours were used? Now, the interesting thing about this is that the use in both locations of the wireless is very similar. There's a lot of use of wireless in St Peters. We've heard that homeschoolers, folks are driving in, they're sitting in the parking lot in the library, because we leave our wireless on all the time, right? So this is why we're very excited that we have a project, provincial funding, to put wireless and extend it, to blast it like a city block or something in all directions. And we are going to do that in the downtown core in St Peters. Now, we've secured permission, I think from everyone. Fingers crossed on that. For it's being installed in the, sorry, it's 9992?
The former liquor store.
The former liquor store. Well, that sounds classy, yeah. On Main Street there, because we think that is actually a more strategic location than the current library location because of the height and position of the building to get the best reach with this project. So the materials, the technology were very backordered, but we've secured them, and now we're looking to move ahead to actually get the work done, to get this set up and going. So that's really exciting for that community, and obviously will be well-used. Okay, what else have we got? Wireless connections made, similar story. Now, public computer use hours obviously dropped because people had to get inside, and that was difficult. So that's kind of one thing that, you know, hasn't been as strong, though we're starting to see it's coming back, which is great. So let's take a look at your lovely new carpet. All right, so what we're doing with the mandated contribution that you give us, we can now be fully accountable to you on this, okay? And we are obviously paying for our local staff to work at your local libraries, but we are also buying stuff to enhance the service. So this is a literacy children's storytime rug and a new puppet theatre that we purchased for the Pettigrew location. They have a strong, and it's just about to relaunch, which is very exciting, use from the community for storytimes. So this is going to be a really nice way for the group to kick off a return to gathering and reading and storytimes. We also have other good news. We have hired an additional person who will provide some staffing redundancy. They have been hired to work at both Pettigrew and St Peters and cover those locations for, you know, various staff leaves like vacation. And they are, once they're trained and immersed in library services, they're going to be working towards providing English storytimes, bilingual storytimes, and other community programs of interest, which should be a nice enhancement for the community. And so that is one thing. We also have another exciting piece of news. We have purchased, again with your funding, a microfilm reader. And a microfilm reader allows people to do genealogical research and read information on, just straight out of a movie, those microphone strips. This is a very popular activity with people visiting the area, kind of a tourist-related thing, and it's very popular with older adults who enjoy genealogical research. So we're excited to be able to have that service. We have not been able to afford that or do that properly for many, many years. And as I say, it is something that has to stay. It's a fancy computer and with attaching technology at one location. So it's great that it can be at Pettigrew. Let's see if that's all the good news. I think it is. So let's talk about money. All right, so this is actually a happy story, which is probably unusual for council. We have, for the first time in our history, sincerely and genuinely given you back all of your mandated contribution in local geographic service. Okay, so that's a big change. We are also giving you a very fair share of the French Grant, also an improvement in funding. Now, we've done sort of a, well, it's a bit past mid-year, but we've done a calculation of where we're at in our spending, and we project that we will be able to fully expense your mandated contribution. Your mandated contribution cannot roll over budget years. We got to spend it all locally this year. The French Grant can, however, roll over. We're a little bit behind in that spending. Worst-case scenario, we can roll it over to the following budget year and use it then, if I don't get a chance to pick up on that area. So again, this is something that is new for us, and we're very pleased to be able to be accountable in this way and really start working to build up and improve the service for the community. One important part about giving populations back the funding that they give us for library services is it should help to provide the correct amount of service, help to stabilise, build up. I want to emphasise for councillors that any previous fines or bills that patrons may have had in the past, they've all been wiped. That was part of what people did during the pandemic. Old bills from years and years ago, all gone. Everybody's got a fresh new start with the library. Your residents can go in. They don't need to be afraid about something that, a little oopsie that happened 10 years ago or whatever. And we have services that are good for working families who are busy, who are online, who are looking for something modern. They're there now. Particularly for schoolchildren, we have French encyclopedias, English encyclopedias, 24/7, great for support for curriculum. So it's just a huge, happy story that I'm really glad to be able to bring to you. And if we look at the nice last picture here, this is a display from the St Peters Library, and it's just an example of the kind of creativity that our staff can get up to to help promote and make the library welcoming and enticing for residents.
Thank you so much. Really good news story. That's fantastic. Thank you for all the good news and the lovely pictures, and that's really awesome. I'd like to open it for questions from council at this stage. All right, well, I have a couple, maybe I'll start. So your discussion on the rate, our rate being lower in terms of the provincial contribution. Did you say 37,000 per 2,200 people as opposed to 41?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe that's something that we could be working on with Minister Dunn, I think would be the tourism and heritage minister. So if councillors were okay with that, perhaps I could, you know, we could start the ball rolling on some communication to the minister on that.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then I think also, just in terms of getting the word out about all these new pieces of good news, we've got Richmond Reflections coming up again. It would be a really good opportunity, I think, to have some library content in that next edition. If it's not too late for this one coming, then maybe the next one. I think it's not too late yet.
The winter one.
Yeah, the winter one, yeah.
Yeah, I will follow up on that. That is great. We do have some advertising funding, and we are looking for local venues to push out some print or some online advertising too. So any suggestions about that would be welcome.
Yeah, and you know, I would also suggest, as you're doing social media pieces, you know, if you want to bring them to the attention of myself, you know, councillors, and we can do that, you know, with staff as well. I think that would be really great to be able to share that content across all of our media as well.
Definitely follow up on that. We have a lovely curated Facebook, Twitter feed that could be helpful promoting collection and services.
Yeah, that's really great, okay. All right, and that 800 number again, 855?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that's all right. I just want to make sure we've got that front and centre, so we...
Yep, 855-787-7323.
Okay.
And ECRL.ca. We will be launching a new website, so that's something that we'll certainly forward and share sometime in the next month, and a bit of a new look and feel for our online presence as well, which should revitalise the image for some folks.
Okay, that's great. Okay. Any other questions for Claire?
No, I have no questions. I was just, that was an awesome, an awesome job, Laura. I'm still a little frightened to figure out why you would have taken Claire with you after doing the degree. Good job.
You're never getting the puck from me again. Well, I could say a few things about the, I mean, we are embarking on locating a new library in St Peters. We hope to really make it a community hub, and with council support, and, you know, because that's one of the things you do provide. We've sent out some proposals in partnership between the village and COA to get a design function going and renovations. We never thought of asking the county to contribute.
Oh, well, too late.
But I mean, things Laura and her staff have endured a lot of hardship in the last year, and I'll tell you, she goes on about equalisation, but what happened was, you know, Geisborough and Sherbrooke were getting a lot more library service than they were contributing, and Richmond and Inverness were losing. So they went through a lot of strife with the other councils to mandate an equal playing field. And you're going to, we already have a new staff here in Richmond County, and that's because of those hard steps that were taken to level the playing field, and hopefully with your support, we might even be able to emphasise and get more for about the province. But it's a big deal, and plus this new wifi system in St Peters that'll reach a city block. We're hoping that it'll reach the canal, the marina. I mean, and it's all, all we have to do is pay the operating expenses because it's a grant that's going to put it in the library, the new library, and reach all of downtown. So it's another big bonus. It'll be great for tourist attraction, be able to get wifi everywhere else.
Yeah, I mean, the green news for us is that, you know, when you're paying more or whatever you're paying now, like we're now able to show you the value of your investment. And that can give you greater confidence going, okay, it's okay to invest in libraries because we're going to get that back.
Right.
Where for years you were essentially over-supporting our regional operations and supporting service in other counties. There's fairness, and then there's fairness, right? But the reality of it is the population that generates the funding needs that funding for service. So there's a basic logic thing that's now in place, and that's really critical to building up a positive future. And certainly, the space that is potential in St Peters would be a lovely enhancement. Because at our current location, we really can't do programming, particularly with social distancing now. That's making it even more of a thing. And we know we have that homeschooling population that would really welcome a place to be inside and kind of really take advantage of the value for the community. So it's looking good.
That's great.
Wonderful.
Great. Okay, so we have a couple of things to follow up on, and we'll do that. And I thank you very much for your time and for coming in. And hopefully we'll have a provincial representative soon. I know you and I have been on that for many months. Yep, fingers crossed that that works out, so.
Yeah, great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You guys.
Claire and Laura. Appreciate it. All right, so the next item on our agenda is a presentation from the Cape Breton Partnership. So welcome Carla and team. Carla and Megan come into the table, so. But I want to recognise we've got Omar and Tyler and Carly here in the gallery as well, so thanks for coming in. So over to you, Carla and Megan.
Thank you, and thank you very much for having us. It's really wonderful to finally get to see people in the flesh and to feel like we're getting back to our new normal. So again, my name is Carla Arseneau. I'm the president and CEO of the Cape Breton Partnership. I am joined tonight by my colleagues Megan Watten, Omar and Che Galdine, who will also be co-presenting with me. And we do have Tyler Math as our Director of Economic Development, and Carly Appleton, our Communications Coordinator, who are joining us here this evening as well. I do have a number of slides, and in the essence of time, I thought I'm going to try and... There we go. I'm going to skip through some of these just fairly quickly. They're in your package. And I wanted to hit to some of the highlights, because I think that what Megan and Omar are going to talk to you about more specifically is probably the parts you're more interested in. But I do want to cover up a few sort of highlights. So we focus on a number of key priority areas, and here are some of the priority areas specifically for the CBREN, of which Richmond County is part of. So investment attraction, some of the work here around the Straight of Council marketing project, Point Tupper investment attraction, working with NSBI. We do a lot of work around sector promotion. Specifically, we do a lot of work in the creative economy and a number of other sectors. Healthcare recruitment and retention, which is a big one here in Richmond. Planning and strategy, municipal priority projects. The Gateway Project is one example of that. Islandwide, bylaw review, broadband housing. These are sort of key, kind of priority areas that our organisation gets involved in in a number of ways. So some of the things I wanted to chat with you about before I handed over to Megan are some things, just, I guess, really more reminders or updates for council. So during the pandemic, one of the biggest sectors that was affected was the creative economy. And through our work with our Creative Economy Development Officer, we were able to partner with the former Department of Labor and Advanced Education, now called LSI, with the province through unemployment in Nova Scotia, to run two projects where we hired 18 artists and artisans across the island to work during the pandemic. That program is now complete. They had a year's worth of work, but we are going to be running it again. So I raised it tonight because if you do know of artists or artisans in Richmond that might be interested in such a thing, please connect with Megan, and we can definitely see if they qualify for that program. The work around the Port Hoxbury Marine Innovation Centre. I know, you know, many residents of Richmond use Port Hoxbury as a service centre, and we've been working closely with NSCC and the town on the Marine Innovation Centre there. Entrepreneurcv.com. If you know any entrepreneurs who are interested in supports and resources, check out that website. It is managed by our team, and there's a host of information available on it that your constituents may be interested in. The MIT REAP Project. So that is one actually that Warden Mambraket is involved with us on. And we have a number of Richmond County residents that are part of that team. So it's a year-long project that we're doing with MIT. REAP stands for Regional Entrepreneurship Accelerator Program. And we have been working with a larger team of folks in the Cape Breton Strait area to do more work to support... to, uh, do more work to support, uh, entrepreneurs and specifically IDEs, so innovation-driven entrepreneurs. So that's something you might hear about, uh, in the future. And, uh, and we are coming to the end of the academic portion of that exercise and we'll be rolling out some projects in the region. So, um, just something to stay tuned for more information. Um, also, just pre-pandemic, we ran a three-month pilot with Sydney Credit Union to help support, uh, women entrepreneurs. And it was quite successful. So Sydney Credit Union is now working with us on an island-wide program that we'll be launching very soon for women entrepreneurs. Uh, I believe fifty percent of the, of the spots are going to be designated for indigenous entrepreneurs. So if you know of any women in business who are interested in this, um, micro loan program, it is going to be starting up again. Safety First in Cape Breton. We oversee the Safety First in Cape Breton Network. And I just wanted to note that two Cape Breton companies were the recipients of the Safety Awards this year. And ironically, they're both based in Lewesdale. So Windmark Cape Breton and Landry Brothers Limited were both, uh, the successful winners. We've been running that program for, I believe, seven or eight years now. And, uh, and we also do Safety Awards in addition to a large conference in the spring. The Cape Breton Connector Program, Robin Leeseal, a number of you may be familiar with her. Um, she has moved on to another opportunity. And we're pleased to introduce Aya Darahali, who has started with us about a month ago. She is the new Connector Program Coordinator and I'm sure she will soon be making, uh, her way around Richmond County. Um, and she particularly will likely work a lot with NSCC graduates, any, you know, recent grad-ready, uh, um, job-ready applicants who are recent grads of the program. And the last part for me is our Cape Breton First Campaign. Um, we continue to, to run that initiative. And, um, it's an, it's trying to encourage entrepreneurs and, and individuals, people to support local businesses and think Cape Breton first, particularly as we could lead up to the holiday season. So we've partnered with The Reporter and we'll be running a campaign, uh, in the near future.
All right, it's my turn. Um, so the Cape Breton Partnership promoted and distributed free hand sanitizer uh, from the Department of Health and Wellness and businesses across the island. Uh, we also participated in the CDL Rapid Screaming, Rapid Screening Consortium. Uh, we rolled out two cohorts islandwide alongside with the Chamber of Commerce uh, in conjunction with six other, uh, regional enterprise networks. Uh, a part of that, we had to attend, uh, weekly meetings. And just recently, they started promoting at-home and workplace screening for businesses, uh, and employees. We originally developed, uh, the Cape Breton, Welcome to Cape Breton.ca as one of, as a one-stop shop to help introduce people all over the world to Cape Breton, Unamaghi. At the time, uh, this was largely in response to a growing interest in the island and what life is like here. Uh, since then, we've decided we needed to retune the site as a responsive, as a responsive to possible changing times, especially the global pandemic. Um, as a part of that, we, uh, were able to help form two welcome groups, one in Lewesdale and one in St. Peters. The one in St. Peters, we've successfully, uh, welcomed fifteen newcomers, uh, eight families in total. In Lewesdale, they have a whopping thirty-four newcomer families. So, uh, Shoreline Construction has identified opportunities in the county for mountain biking and cycling infrastructure. Uh, the region has excellent potential and is well-populated with, uh, active local communities. We've been in early discussions with Budla Deck First Nations, who is looking at doing a pump track. Uh, we also had discussions with Speedo regarding the creation of community infrastructure with the goal of tying in key locations with community trails. Uh, and we've also had discussions with Lisa Boudreau, uh, who, uh, was the Destination Cape Breton Director, Board Director, sorry, uh, and is now Cindy Walker. Uh, she has identified that the Isle of Dam could be a real, an ideal location for coastal-style mountain biking trail route.
Oh, sure. Sorry, I can't really talk while. I know, and our microphone systems are just.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
Okay.
That's great.
Um, so the municipalities play a key, key role in successful mountain biking strategies. Where private entities are concerned, assistance with land use, deed, access, community marketing opportunities will be important areas, uh, that we need municipality support with. So Business Advisory Services. Sorry, I'm a little bit behind here on my slides. Trying to do both. Here we go. Um, so we opened thirty-seven files. We engaged with fifty-two clients. Uh, we've done thirty-five business plans and two advisory services. Uh, that's just for the CB Ren contribution. Um, I did want to note that Richmond County only had one file open with all of those numbers. So we are mentioning, mentioning it, um, as we would like your help to raise those numbers as well.
You think it's more or less that people just don't know the services available? So our distance planning advisor will help any business for free, you know, uh, to, with the support for a business plan.
Um, we recently embarked on a retail market analysis. Um, this study will determine, oh, there you can hear me now. This study will determine what new and existing retail businesses and investment opportunities exist in the CB Ren. Um, the retail sector can benefit and well-designated local, uh, sorry. The retail sector can benefit from well-designated local regulation, business support services, marketing and promotion. Um, the work will start the first week of November with the final report and deliverables at the end of February. So in the CB Ren, um, St. Peters, Port Hoxbury, Inverness, Bedeck and a northern community of Cape Breton that hasn't been determined yet. Either, we're thinking either Shetty Camp or Ingunish will be on the retail market analysis. Housing. Um, housing shortages in Cape Breton present barriers to economic growth and employment opportunities for newcomers. Um, we recently did a housing survey for Shetty Camp and, and the town of Port Hoxbury. Um, we wanted to just mention this as it is an opportunity that we can help Richmond County if that's something that they would like our help with. Uh, the Tourism and Seasonality Project, uh, the Cape Breton Partnership has promoted the Labor Project in Richmond County. Uh, we've supported a number of local restaurants and businesses to gain additional education at a no-cost program. Plan Richmond County. Uh, so Plan Richmond is a project to create a municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw for all areas in the municipality of the county of Richmond. This project will focus primarily on areas of the municipality where there are no zoning, uh, controls in place. And I just wanted to highlight a few other related programs, uh, that we didn't have time to put slides together for. Uh, Skills Workforce Development, Youth Employment and Skills Training, Richmond County Opportunity Strategies Development, Inclusive Entrepreneurship and Virtual Advisor.
Musical chairs.
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to, to give you a quick little update on the labor market and immigration portfolio overall. So, um, if you're not aware, Cape Breton never had its own job board before. Um, before we, in two thousand and nineteen, we had a Cape Breton Job Expo. We partnered with Nova Scotia Works, CBU and NSCC, and it was very successful. We had over two hundred and fifty positions posted. And what we found out at that opportunity is that, um, employers really needed a place to gather all their employment in one place. For the, the next expo series that was successful, we were absolutely doing it again with all partners. But unfortunately, COVID happened. And when COVID happened, we had thirty employers registered for over three hundred positions and they're all over the island. So immediately I ran to Carla, can I do it? Yes, let's do a job board. Immediately went and we started, uh, working on the job board. And we created a job board, because our work in immigration, we knew the national standards. And we were able to create a job board that is truly up to par with our national counterparts. Um, so last week, uh, we actually deployed the third iteration, uh, this third update. And it was launched in August, uh, twenty twenty, and we already had our third update deployed. And now organizations can post for Board of Director opportunities and volunteer opportunities. So this is a feature that doesn't even exist on a lot of the comments. So that is really a, a big update there. So, and it, it has been growing very quickly. Um, so just, we had, we have a hundred and eighty, eighty-eight employers signed up and actively posting on the site. We had over four hundred and seventy positions that were posted since August. The total number of users from, uh, in that whole period, last time I checked Google Analytics, we had thirty, thirty-four thousand users create, that conducted over fifty-one thousand sessions. So a session is when someone visits the site and spends, at least has a one click inside the site and going to job postings. And you can see from the, the graph on the right, the, the trend going up over thirty-day period. We have an average of two thousand users on the site. And on the left is the insights on, um, uh, Facebook. Over a, a month period, we have a usual twenty-eight thousand reach, um, for the social media presence wise. Um, so we have human resource management staff and immigration staff. And that's basically the portfolio for human resource and immigration. Um, we have multiple immigration-related programming and for human. So there's a team dedicated to settlement, integration, inclusion, which would include the Cape Breton Local Immigration Partnership, the Welcome Network and Workplace Inclusion Charter. And then there's another dedicated team, uh, to human resources and immigration. And these are focused on supporting employers and their candidates. So the HR team and immigration focuses on employers to meet their staffing needs and help them navigate the immigration system. We have on staff two chartered, uh, two chartered professionals in human resources candidates and two registered Canadian immigration consultants, which is a unique advantage, not, there's no organizations that have this. Um, human resources and immigration, just overall what we focus on. For human resource management, we just offer guidance that allows employers to remain competitive and develop the necessary understanding to engage in national, international recruitment. That could include anything from having a proper job description done to doing a, a national scan, helping them understand where to get the median wages, what is competitive, what is not, where to go for a market, et cetera. And immigration services are focused on helping employers and foreign workers in navigating the Canadian immigration system overall and preemptively identify complications before they happen and resolve them. Because there's nothing worse than an immigration file going wrong because of a missed document or something that happened wrong. That can set a file back six months, which means someone loses status and employer loses an employee. And it really, it, it, things can go really bad. Um, we have two federal programs that we are direct referral partner for, which is the Global Skill Strategy. They get an, a concierge service from Immigration Canada and a Global Talent Stream, which is an expedited labor market impact assessment in two weeks, which is unheard of, but they need a referral from our organization. Uh, we have provincial referral programs, so I'll speak to the Atlantic Immigration Pilot in a bit. But we also support, uh, the province in referring and to the Nova Scotia RME program. And in terms of international, uh, relationships that we've built, we've built a relationship with Anapek Morocco for Mobilité Francaise Fund, which is a labor market impact assessment exempt, uh, um, work permit for French speakers. So if anyone's looking to hire for someone in a, a semi-skilled occupation that speaks French, we can get them here in no time with Anapek and get them resumes. And even Anapek in Morocco will even organize interviews, have them in a room for digital interviews and all that fun stuff. So anyone in a French-speaking community looking to hire a French speaker, even if it's an English job, as long as the person speaks French, it doesn't matter if the job is in French or English. As long as the person coming for the job speaks French, that is considered, uh, um, national interest to Canada to increase the French speakers. The Atlantic Immigration Pilot. So in two thousand and seventeen, we started the partnership, uh, with the Nova Scotia Office of Immigration, now known as Labor, they became the, uh, Labor Skills and Immigration. There were only two, I checked the sheet, there were only two employers designated in Richmond. Um, they're looking to fill fifteen positions. And that would have been from the, the initial outreach when the pilot was launching. Um, you know, they, they may have even reached to these employers before the program launched to, to just kickstart the program. Today, there are over, uh, twenty employers designated with a total of fifty-six positions that we're looking to be filled throughout the lifetime of the pilot for Richmond County. Uh, we have been supporting most of these employers. I couldn't believe it when I checked, but all of them are probably are on a pub line. Um, and we have led, uh, that, which led to thirty-four new permanent residents. These are files that have been completed from our office and they're going through permanent residency procedures. They may have already received it for Immigration Canada. And this includes their, the foreign workers, their spouses and their accompanying dependents. Good news, Immigration Canada is committed to launching the Permanent Immigration Program. But as a result, the pilot comes to an end, which means, uh, when the new program starts in two thousand and twenty-two, all employers will have to re-designate. Their old designations on the pilot expire, which means we anticipate a, that severe demand to get everything back on track when the, the permanent program comes, um, comes into effect. Healthcare Recruitment and Retention. So, um, myself, uh, I, I engage with, um, representing the Cape Breton Partnership on Cape Breton South Committee. We've been there since its inception. And I provide HR and immigration support and I, um, I help any way I can. Um, we have, our immigration consultants support recruiters to resolve complications. So now it's, it's becoming more frequent that whenever there's complications, they, they know to reach else, they know to reach out to us in advance to avoid the complications. So at first it was like, oh, something went wrong, can you fix it? To now being like, hey, we have someone coming in. Can you just make sure nothing goes wrong? This is how it's becoming now. We have three healthcare coordinators that have been actively helping Cape Breton South as well as the CBRM Committee. Um, and when we were launching CBRM Committee, we were trying to replicate the success that we've had at Cape Breton South. It's really an amazing group. Um, and now we maintain also a private mailing list of individuals and property management companies interested in offering healthcare, uh, professional accommodation. Because, you know, being on Kijiji or trying to have a healthcare professional do this on their own is not really efficient, especially if something happens under a tight timeline. We have a process for it. We maintain a private list. There's a request form. We get all the details. We blast the list. We find out who's interested in accommodating them and we can coordinate a handshake. Um, on the settlement and integration side, I, I don't need to dig a lot into the, the, these programs. But the Cape Breton Local Immigration Partnership is a, is an, it's an umbrella sort of. I see it as at the top, making, bringing thirty local organizations to ensure that we foster welcoming, inclusive communities. Um, the Welcome Network is a growing, a, a growing number of welcome groups spread all over the island. Community members helping to welcome newcomers and make them feel home. It's, it's difficult when you're in a rural area and you don't have this connection of people helping you connect. So it's really great. And of course, the Connector Program. So, you know, when you, we have, um, a foreign worker who's coming to fill a position, the spouse still needs work, right? Um, and finding employment is, is the, the most important. Um, and a lot of research, they, they compete, but spousal employment is a main factor of retention. If you have a skilled worker coming in for a job and their spouse can't find a job, they're most probably gonna leave so that the spouse, you know, they need to be happy as a unit. So, um, retention-wise, and, and this is a kind of an ending note. So sixty-two percent of all endorsement files that we have supported on the pilot have been for international graduates. And that, that was accelerated because of pandemic and, you know, accepting outside applications was, was not easy unless it was in a critical shortage sector. But sixteen percent as well have been workers already in Canada. Both NSCC and CBU will continue to play a significant role in attracting new temporary and permanent residents to the region. They fill labor shortages, they stimulate our economy, increase the population and its diversity. So we must retain our current, uh, and new residents. So that goes back to the Settlement Integration Portfolio. Join a welcome network, become a connector. Uh, post your employment opportunities on the job board so people know where to find them. Um, don't just rely on word of mouth because sometimes if they, if, if people have not been welcomed to community, they're not gonna know from word of mouth. And I think eighty-two percent, a percentage shared by the Connector Programs is almost eighty percent of positions are filled through networking, not, uh, job postings. Uh, but please use the job board.
And in your, and in your package, you should have a copy of our year-end review. Uh, also, I've sent the, the LIF Newcomer Survey Results. That piece, that document is, is exceptional. And there's a lot of really good information that was in there that was prepared by the LIF. And then you have, also have a rack card, which has some information, uh, on some of the settlement, uh, services and stuff.
Great, awesome. Well, thank you very much. It's a lot of information. I don't know what to do. It's overwhelming. But no, thanks very much, guys, for that. I, I mean, I had a couple of questions just, um, around the housing survey. And I don't know if that's something that council might want to discuss at a later time. Um, but, you know, I think we are probably at a point where we could be pursuing something like that. I know we, you know, work really closely with the Housing Matters Coalition, but it would be nice to get some, get really specific for our region. So, um, so maybe that's something we could follow up with you guys on.
We've had a number of developers, uh, spike interest because of the one in Port Hoxbury. That has kind of generated some talk, so.
Okay, that's really great. Thank you.
Specifically around affordable housing as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, and just, I, I just wanted to note that, uh, the job board that you described, it is free to use. There's no cost, right?
Nope, no cost.
Just wanted to confirm that. And, um, so I know you're, you're, you know, we were talking about promoting the business planning services and stuff like that. I think. I think, you know, we've connected with, uh, Laurier with Richmond Reflections in the past. And I think let's just continue to do that and you guys identify those priority areas. And same as I mentioned to Laura, like if you've got social media pieces that you're using to promote, please send them our way and, and to staff here and we'll pop them up on our, on our social media as well. So we'll help you spread the word as much as we can because I'm sure there are businesses here that are, you know, missing out on those services because you don't know what you don't know, right?
Yeah, and, and often too, what are, you know, whether it's meeting with, with Megan as our EDO or with Shannon as a business signing advisor, often a lot of what our team is really good at is referrals as well, right? Like, you know, whether there's, you know, it's looking for referrals to provincial government organizations, federal government organizations. We do a lot of collaboration that way as well. So even if it's something that our own team can't, you know, resolve or doesn't have, you know, uh, often we may know who does. So, um, a lot of, uh, I would, you know, recommend if you do have particular, you know, business owners or budding entrepreneurs who, who have questions, just send them our way. And you'd be surprised, um, what our team is, is able to, to help to support. And even on the immigration side, right? Whether it's HR related, um, number one challenge right now across the province is labor.
Oh, yes.
Right? Not enough people and, um, and everybody is facing that challenge. So our team has really great, um, as Elmar mentioned, you know, their HR supports and services that we can offer are, are great.
Yeah, and I just have to say that, you know, the work on the recruiting for health group, like thank you all for your support on that. It's been instrumental and, uh, yeah, it's like my other job. But it's a very, it's worthwhile activity and it's working, right? And that is so rewarding to see, so. Um, any other questions for, uh, for our partnership staff?
The only question I think I would have would be, have you connected with, uh, financial institutions in the local area? I just can't help but think that a lot of the businesses who may be looking at starting up, they're probably the first point of contact is an FI to be able to get some funding and then they're usually said, hey, you need to have a business plan. Uh, so I, I guess I would just ask the question, like, have you connected with some of those local?
Not so much the financial institutions, although we, we should do more of that. Um, but we do a fair bit, you know, with referrals to, you know, whether it's the various CBDCs.
Yeah, mhm, yeah.
You know, and, and in some cases someone will go to an organization and, and as you say, they, they, they need their business plan first.
Mhm, that's right.
And, right? And, or, or that entity can't help them with the business plan because that puts them in conflict. So, uh, our organization is often a good place to start for that.
Yeah, because certainly that's a barrier for a lot, you know, in, in one of my other jobs too, it's the same idea, right? Is I encounter a lot of people who want to start their own business and so it's certainly something that I'll refer them to you for sure. Um, but I do think that that's what you, that's sometimes the barrier for a lot of people to starting a business is that they usually need to create a business plan and they don't have capital to do it because it's not a cheap, uh, event, right? So it's, uh, it's good to know that that's accessible to those, yeah, for sure.
I would say that, uh, sorry, excuse me, but, uh, East Coast Credit Union definitely is someone we, we work with quite regularly. And, uh, I know, ob- obviously they're, they're pan, almost pan provincial. And, uh, they've been instrumental in a number of very small and very large business opportunities here. And, uh, Shannon is, uh, on a first name basis with their, some of the lending, uh, folks there, so.
Yeah, I'm on the board of that credit union as well, so I'm happy to hear that, very happy to hear that.
Well, they post on the job board as well.
Yeah, awesome.
There we go.
All of the worlds collide.
All right, so I'm just watching our time. I think we're gonna wrap it up there. Thank you guys so much for coming in to share this information with us this evening.
So, so before we go, the new, the new immigration program, you said it starts in two thousand and twenty-two?
January first, twenty-two.
That was my, that, perfect, yeah. I just wanted to know the timeframe, but January first, right, cool, thank you.
That's a transition from pilot to permanent.
Okay, cool.
It's the same thing, but it'll be a permanent immigration stream.
Effective January one.
Yeah.
It's great. Perfect. Okay, thanks a lot guys, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm, uh, gonna truck us along then. Our next item on our agenda is the motion to amend the following policies. So the first one is the hours of operation in order to include the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation in the list of holidays, which the municipal office will be closed on. Um, so that was just a simple one-line kind of change to that policy. I assume councillors have had an opportunity to, uh, review it following our last bylaw and policy committee meeting. Were there any, um, questions or concerns with how that information is presented in the policy? Okay, so maybe I'll have a motion to amend the hours of operation policy.
I'll make a motion to amend the hours of operation policy.
Thank you, councillor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or?
Yeah, I'll second the motion.
Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Any further discussion on that?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, thank you. All right, and so the next item is a motion to amend the grants policy as per amendments made at the November third, two thousand and twenty-one bylaw and policy committee meeting. And again, that policy was included in your package for review. Um, any, uh, discussion errors or, uh, or changes to be, to be made to that? Okay, so I'll have a motion, accept a motion to amend that grants policy.
I'm a.
Councillor, or Deputy Warden, Melanie Sampson, thank you. Could I have a second or?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Diggle. Any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried. All right, the next item on our agenda is a motion to adopt the flag policy, uh, which we worked on at our last bylaw and policy committee meeting. Um, so the motion is to adopt that flag policy as a policy of the municipality of the county of Richmond and it was included in your package for review. Um, so could I have a motion or to adopt the flag policy as presented?
I'll make a motion to adopt the flag policy as presented.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Second on that, please.
I'll second that.
Next deputy warden. Any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, so that motion is carried, thank you. Okay, so I have a couple of updates, um, from, since the last time that we met. And the first one is regarding an accessibility advisory committee update. And I know councillors, we would normally do committee updates at a regular council meeting, but I wanted to bring it up here because we do have an RFP that's out right now and it's, it is time sensitive and the deadline closes before our next council meeting. So I'm just gonna read through my update. And Yvonne, I emailed you a, a corrected one of these today. So the Richmond County Accessibility Advisory Committee has been meeting monthly since the summer of two thousand and twenty-one. Maybe, maybe I should say monthly and then some, so on an as needed basis too. Our meetings are held on the third Thursday of the month at four P M. And additional meetings are scheduled as needed. A special meeting of the committee was held on November third to further review the draft request for, for proposals for consulting services to form our accessibility plan. The RFP or Request for Proposals includes three deliverables. The first is an accessibility plan for the village of St. Peters to comply with the Nova Scotia Accessibility Act. The second is an accessibility plan for the county of Richmond, also to comply with the act. And the third item is that to have the consultant use the Rick Hanson Foundation's rating and certification process in order to assess and rate municipal owned facilities. So for the county of Richmond, that would include the municipal office, the Richmond Arena, the Pity de Grau Library and the Solid Waste Management Facility Scale House. For the village of St. Peters, that would include the village office building and a currently vacant building located at nine-nine-nine-two Grenville Street, which is the former NSLC building that they purchased. The combined budget for all three of these deliverables, the two plans plus the rating and certification process is eighty thousand dollars. And the deadline for submissions from proponents is November sixteenth, after which the committee will convene to review the proposal submissions and select a bid. The RFP is advertised on the Nova Scotia Tender Notices website and will be shared by members of the committee as appropriate. The committee is set to meet again on November eighteenth and again on December sixteenth, uh, to, uh, to continue progress on the file. So this concludes the, uh, Accessibility Advisory Committee report and I'd welcome any questions.
You mentioned earlier, was there an update or something? Because on page, we had page seven or whatever, the, uh, where it's bold, the accessibility plan for the municipality of the county of Richmond, the village of St. Peters. It has there that it must be completed by February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Oh, it should read two thousand and twenty-two. Yeah, that's a good catch. I'll, uh, I'll mention that to Laurier for sure. Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. We've all lost a year.
Well, it's, uh, two thousand and twenty-two further down. When it shows the dates, several things, this is just.
It was on page seven, you said?
Yeah, page seven. It shows under the project description.
Okay, great. I'll mention that to Laurier, thank you. Good catch. Any other questions? Okay. So do we need a motion to accept that? Yeah, so, um, so if someone could make a motion to accept the report that I just read?
I'll make a motion.
Councillor Sean Sampson, thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question?
Right, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, thank you. So I would just encourage everyone, everybody to share that RFP around and hopefully we'll get some good responses back, because I'm sure we will. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, uh, an NSFM update. And I just wanted to make a quick mention of this. I tuned into parts of the conference, um, as much as I could. Uh, it was a two-day conference last week held in a virtual format. So, and I just wanted to mention to councillors today that Richmond County was featured what I thought was very positively in two of the sessions. Um, the first was in the success stories panel. Um, I was asked to do a presentation on Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health and our, our efforts there, the collaborative approach that we are, we're taking with the town, but also with the, the health facilities and other, uh, other organizations, health-related organizations. And, uh, and spoke to some of the results we're seeing from that. So it was a really great opportunity to, to kind of highlight the work of that group and of the county. And the second one was, uh, in a presentation on asset management helping to address infrastructure deficit, deficits, uh, which referenced the excellent work of staff on our asset management and planning here in the county. So, um, just, it was, just wanted to kind of mention that to folks in case you weren't able to tune into those specific sessions. Uh, we did get some, some really positive, I think, feedback from it. And, um, I wanted to just take a minute at the council table to thank Juanita, Judy and the NSFM team for hosting those important sessions. I think it's really great when municipalities can come together and share, um, successes and challenges in that format. It's really helpful. So any further comments or discussion on that? Okay. So hearing that, I'll move us on to the next item on our agenda. Uh, CAO, over to you, Don.
So, uh, council asked staff to provide some comments on, uh, on recommendation number thirty, thirty-nine of the fire services review. You have a briefing that was done by our CFO, uh, compiled based on the information of the, of the report and, uh, he summed it up in, in a, in a briefing. I guess the only thing I can say is if, I mean, if there are any comments or any questions that council do have, it appears as though it may be, um, a question for budget time. If, if, uh, if we can, uh, discuss that during budget time and, and decide what we want to do and how we want to approach it.
Okay. So, so the memo was provided, um, provided to us. Did you, does anyone have any questions for, uh, Don or Jason?
I just have one question. So I know that the memo just outlined that basically what our plan would be, would be we would just absorb the fire, uh, levy into our regular tax rate. And I understand, of course, that the result is the same whether we leave it separate or we don't. But would we be able to leave it separate just for presentation purposes? I just, I'm not sure that residents would fully understand why the tax rate would increase.
You mean like on the bill?
Yeah, on the billings, yeah, yeah.
Whatever you got, okay. I just, I think they, kind of what the way the motion was framed was that in all groups of rates, if you could do all, if you just have one rate, some municipalities have it that way or you could still have it broken out, just, or you don't want to have the same rate.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think I'd be in favor of that as well, just so everybody sees what it is.
Yeah, that's a great, great point. Any further questions on that?
So I guess before we get to budget time, yeah, it's, um, figuring out what the needs are exactly as some of the departments in order to, I guess, work backwards from there to figure out what the number may be required. Yeah, I, I guess we may end up asking at some point for some scenarios with a few different numbers. I believe the, um, the, uh, fire services person that was formerly here had been kind of working on something. I'm not sure how far he had gotten with it or what. But, uh, maybe if we could get to a point, have a few options in front of us for, I'm not sure.
So you mean options for what, year we won?
Well, for, yeah, and, and for what rate, um, you know, where, where we could go with each rate kind of thing. So that, uh, just so that we know what, what we're deciding on. Because to, to pick a number before we know what we need, it doesn't really, doesn't work.
So basically, like, as the CAO has alluded to, this is something we generally do as budget time. So once, because the assessment rule is not out for the new year. So once the assessment rule comes out, then you would be able to determine for the fire services alone, uh, what rate would make the most sense. So similarly to how you review the tax rate, whether you look at increasing it, you would review a set rate at that time and increase it at that time. But to just add, to make it more convoluted is that basically, yeah, part of the report, the fire service report detailed a need to have standardized reporting across the fire departments from not only a budgeting perspective, but an audited financial statement perspective. So really it's, like you just kind of said, it's determining what the fire departments need. So I don't think, I don't think we necessarily know what they need and I don't think some of them know exactly what they need. So it's, it's, it would basically be embarking on a mission to help them determine what their needs are. And once you determine what their needs are, then that would tie into what the rate would become based on providing them what they need. And that's not to say that you couldn't provide them more than what they need later on in the year, but basically they would submit reporting to say, hey, we need X amount of dollars a year. We would budget that in the overall budget, you would charge one rate and we would view the fire services levy as one pool of money. And, uh, over time, you would potentially build a reserve from that, from just looking at the Richmond County Fire Departments alone. And then you would have the ability to approve additional monies if they could prove that they need it. And you'd also set aside capital funds for potential future capital projects. So I guess looking at the rate is only one piece of a much larger puzzle to tie everything together. But for the time being, I guess we just answered the one motion, basically saying we could do one rate, uh, across the board. Because I guess staff do agree with the notion that it's just similarly to the tax rate is that to provide fire protection Richmond County should cost the same across the county.
Okay, thank you, Jason. And I know in your memo, um, it did mention that this type of change would mean that, you know, I guess it's implied, it was, was the word that you had used was they would no longer, departments would no longer receive levy revenue based on an assessment times rate model, but rather it would be, uh, an amount of revenue generated based on a rate calculated as part of the general rate. But then also, um, you know, that, that, that funds would be granted based on a demonstration of need, which is a, a big departure from what, you know, what, the way things work right now. And I think that's something that we'll have to consider carefully at budget time as well. And to your point, like what, like what that process looks like, right? So, um, okay.
I just feel like there's probably a lot of pre-work that needs to happen prior to budget. Okay, so in my mind, I'm thinking about all the things you've just said, Jason, right? Like is that there, there would be different levels of, different standards, I would say, of record keeping and of reporting. And we would want everybody to be in some sort of similar band of, of accountability, if you will. And, you know, what does that look like? You know, would we, would we be doing the record keeping for the fire departments in-house here? And how does that affect your department, right? I just, I, I feel like there's a lot of, like you said, a lot of turns in this path. You know, charging one rate is pretty easy. You just change what it looks like on the bill. Right? Deciding what the rate is, is a different story. And determining how to distribute that money is a whole other conversation. And there's a whole bunch of parts in between that. So I, I don't know if me, you know, we were perhaps maybe a little too specific in terms of our motion. Um, because I'm feeling like in order to be able to really consider it at budget time, I think we need to pick, you know, consider the entire picture. So I'm not entirely sure what that, what another motion could look like that would support that kind of information gathering. But I'm just wondering what others are thinking about in terms of that.
Yeah, because maybe, maybe I, excuse me, maybe I misunderstood, but I was under the understanding that we were going to, the, the purpose was to provide an equal, uh, we're looking at providing an equal levy for the fire services, not so much amalgamating all the money and then distributing between the, uh, departments. So again, I, I do understand that the, uh, we have to look at the departments that are not so, I guess, well-funded, but we also. So again, I, I do understand that the, we have to look at the departments that are not so, I guess, well-funded, but we also have to consider the population and everything else of each department. So again, my understanding, which is, doesn't seem like it's coincides with this, was that we were looking for a fire levy that may balance to, to each, I guess, balance right across the board, not so much the total funding and then being dispersed.
I guess the, the answer to the, the simple answer to, to the motion that was made is that there's no simple answer, is that, you know, so, so the motion, the motion is clear, is can we have one rate across the board? The answer is yes, we can. But what you're talking about is a major shift in the model and the way that the fire departments operate, because right now, the model and the formula is that they have an assessment, and they set their own rate, and that's their revenue. But now by setting one rate, you're shifting to one rate across the board. Now, if the highest rate is sixteen cents per hundred of assessment, in order to not harm or reduce the revenue of any of the fire departments, you'd basically have to have a minimum of sixteen cents across the board for everybody. And then really, that would give revenue to some, to most, and then one would basically stay the same at sixteen cents. In a model where you look at generating the same amount of revenue dollars, we equated that to be approximately twelve cents rounded, but now you have departments that are at sixteen, fourteen, sixteen, fifteen, eleven, those would technically stand to lose, and the ones that are nine, ten would, and eleven would gain. So it's not just as simple as saying, can we go at one rate across the board? It's a major shift in the way that, that they would operate, and now they would need to demonstrate and say to the county, we need a hundred thousand dollars to, because now it's one pool of money, so you charge the rate, it's basically one pool of money, and the fire department would say, well, we need a hundred thousand dollars to operate. And based on, you know, a reliable set of budget and audited statements, you would say, yeah, they need a hundred thousand. And you would give them a hundred thousand out of that pool of money, so they would no longer have the ability to set the rate, you would give them what they would need to operate.
And so, I understand how you're explaining it, but I, so I was under the understanding, I guess, and I, we do have to break it down and, and find the, the average amongst fire departments, so let's say right now, the average, I'm just going to use, let's say it is eleven or twelve, eleven cents, is your average that would disperse between the departments. I, I believe the, well, I was under the understanding that if we set the fire levy at twelve cents, then that extra one cent that was recouped right across the board of Richmond County, that would be the pool that the, I guess, the departments that did not have the extra funding could pool from. So by increasing it that one cent or two cents, wouldn't, wouldn't still, so I'll use the Almenham as an explanation, or at eleven cents, so if we increased it to twelve cents, that pool, that extra one cent from the Richmond, from the Almenham, or, you know, from the Almenham Volunteer Fire Department, that one extra cent would go into a pool, not into the Almenham Volunteer Fire Departments, and from that pool, some other department that needed the extra funding, that would be available to them.
It's, it's not going to work that way, because you're right, the Almenham would gather an extra cent, but someone like Lordways, who's at sixteen cents, would be losing four cents. So again, the twelve cent was just the illustration example that we had given to you guys to say, if you charged twelve cents across the board, it would generate, at the time, it was seven hundred ninety-four thousand, it was the exact same amount of money that is currently generated on the budget, based on having all these different rates. Now, you're right, what you'd have to do in your instance is say,
Top rate.
Maybe we need a fifteen cent rate, or maybe we need a sixteen cent rate across the board. Now, instead of generating seven hundred ninety-four thousand, you might be generating nine hundred thousand or a million dollars in revenue, then you could look at saying, okay, well, with that extra money, we're going to redistribute this in a way that, that's more fairly.
Well, and, and that's correct, however, you wouldn't lose the, Almenham wouldn't lose the money, nor would the Lordways. So, in, in retrospect, if, if you charge, well, if twelve cents is our, is our average number and we charge thirteen cents, Lordways may be set at a sixteen cent per hundred dollar worth of assessment, but they're also getting that extra one cent from Almenham, that three cents from Lusdale, so all that money is going into the pool anyway, so they wouldn't drop from their sixteen cent down to thirteen cents. Retrospect, they would get everything else, so they'd get the increase from Lusdale, the increase from Almenham. So they'd still be available to get that money from the pool. It's just that the Almenham wouldn't get it, and Lusdale wouldn't get it, but theoretically, they'd still get their eleven cents or their nine cents, the only one that would have to apply with, to the pool would be anybody above that thirteen cents.
I think, I think we're kind of saying the same.
Yeah, I think so.
It's just that you, you're almost eliminating the, the Almenham rate, you're eliminating all the rates and saying everybody has the same rate, it's a pool of money. But now Almenham would need to prove to municipal council that we need X
Yeah.
to operate, and that would be based on standard reporting and all that stuff I just said. And then, basically, a budget time council would say, yep, we're going to give Almenham this, we're going to give Lusdale this, and you would set out all the amounts. And then you're right, there might be an additional pool of money, because your rate might be more than what actually everybody needs. And then what that additional pool of money would give you some leeway is that if a fire department came back mid-year and said, oh my god, we need more money, we don't have enough money, they would basically come to council for, for that money based on need.
And I understand that, except I don't think anybody, anybody that falls underneath the, the privy of the twelve cents or thirteen cents, whatever's chosen, would have to
To demonstrate need.
To demonstrate need, because they would already be low, right, they would already be a little, be below the cost.
And I think, I think that is, you know, it's just different variations on a model of dispersment that we would have to figure out in, you know, coming up to budget time, I think, you know, from my understanding, our, our neighbors to the, to the northeast here, and CBRM have a, have a pretty solid way of dispersing funds to their fire departments, so. So perhaps councilors, I'll reach out to Mayor Amanda McDougall and have a quick conversation with her about that, to see if there's some information that might be helpful to bring back, and and I think, in terms of, you know, asking staff to, to help us get ready for budget time, to make these decisions, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, Don or Jason, you know, is, is there some inquiries we could be making across the province in terms of like models where this rate flattening or consistency has already taken place? It'd be nice to have some, some different models to kind of look at, to see if there's something in there that we could tweak to, to be a best fit for Richmond County.
There is one currently in Picto County, I think, that they've enacted within the last six months to a year. My, my only question was, when, when we were at budget time, one cent worked out to roughly ninety thousand, correct?
That's right.
So the twelve cent levy, that's over a million dollars.
Well, no, the twelve cent levy that, when I'm fast, when I'm rewinding back to November of twenty twenty, the twelve cent was basically generating seven hundred ninety-four thousand dollars at the time.
The role has changed, right?
Right.
Yeah.
You know, it's based on assessment rule times rate.
Was that much over a year or two, or?
No, well, so so again, the, the way that the rates were all different, times the assessment rule at the time, was generating seven hundred ninety-four thousand. So all we were telling council was that in order to generate the exact same amount of revenue, your rate would have to be twelve cents rounded for everybody to generate that exact same amount of revenue. That's all we were looking at, I guess, from that standpoint.
Right.
Yeah.
I think at the end of the day, like you, like you say, Jason, I mean, we're, I think we're both speaking the same language here, the, the end result is going to be the same. And I think, when it comes down to it, there's not going to be any surprises what fire departments are going to be asking for the extra funding, right, you know, I mean, there's not going to be surprises there, right, so, yeah, so I think.
But I think they can, yeah.
Yeah, like you say, I mean, if the twelve cents or the thirteen cents is going to bring us the same amount of money we're doing now with all different levies, then, yeah, I mean, one thing comes to mind, in my opinion.
But depending on how we disperse it.
Right.
Depending on how we approve what each department is, you know, so
Right.
it all sounds good until we have a department that comes with a budget and they say, our budget's
Right.
two hundred and fifty thousand, and we say, I don't think it needs to be two hundred and fifty thousand, I think it needs to be two hundred, and their, their attitude is, wait a second, it should be, we know it's two fifty, and we say, nope, it's two hundred.
I can, I can guarantee you that is going to happen.
Right, and then that's going to cause, you know, that's going to just cause a lot of conflict with, with our, you know, so I think that we need to really think through what does it look like in other places.
And I think, I think that was my point, where you can avoid that conflict by
Well, but, but you can't, right, because if you have a department that's getting sixteen cents and we change it to twelve, they're going to lose four.
But they're not going to lose four, because if you change it to, if you change it to twelve, they've gained one cent from the Almenham Volunteer and three from the Lusdale. So that money that they've gained went into a pool.
But there's not enough in the pool, like, if you set an average rate, there's no pool.
Correct, hundred percent.
At the end of the day, if you set a rate, there's no pool, and the money is distributed in different ways to different departments.
Right.
For sure, but there's just no, because if you're using an average pool, right, am I right in saying that?
Yeah, oh, hundred percent.
Right, so there is going to be departments that are going to lose some of their regular revenue that they're accustomed to getting, for sure.
Now, if you set, if you set on, if you set on average and then went one cent above average, so if the average is twelve and you set it at thirteen cents.
Sure, then we have a pool.
Then we have a pool.
Yeah.
And, and in that case, then anybody underneath, anybody below that average will not get any more money, but they still retain what they've gotten. Anybody above that number will have the pool to choose from, which will actually be more money overall, because
Well, if we
Because the average taken from throughout the county will be greater than the four cents.
Like, we would advise, we would advise council to determine a rate across the board that's more than what is needed.
That's right.
Based on the budget, because it's just that, it's a budget, right?
Yes.
So you might say, everybody combined needs, going to need a hundred thousand, well, maybe we should be bringing in a million or more.
That's right.
And then that protects everybody, right, so that if there is a demonstrated need for more money, we would have it, and if, and if they don't need it in that year, then we will plop it into a reserve to start, because part of the report recommended that we start building
Yeah.
fire department reserve and tie in capital, there's, there's a whole host of recommendations, right?
Yeah. So it, so it really, it is, you know, I think the deputy warden put it well, it's really three kind of pieces of work, it's, you know, we're, we're moving towards the single rate, then just determining what that rate is going to be, and then how do we disperse that, and I think maybe we could provide as a council some direction to staff to, to consult with CBRM and Picto County to, you know, get some information on how they've been handling all those three pieces. Does that make sense?
Yeah, or, or any other municipalities that you know, like, I mean, those are the two that we know.
Exactly.
County has, like, this is recent there, so they're going through more or less the same thing, so that would be the best comparison for us, probably.
And I think the report itself, I mean, the report was done by qualified consultants, and they're, they're recommending these things based on
That's right.
models that work and that this is what's happening, so.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of useful information, it's just,
Yeah.
it's just difficult for council to make a motion to direct where it's likely a conversation about all kinds of things and, and to say, look, this is where we want to go.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And the rate is likely one of the, the, you know, the latter discussions to say, let's get this on,
Yes, yes.
settle, let's get this settled, and then we're going to get to a point, you're going to find seven or eight steps down the road that, okay, now we're in a position to have a rate across the board.
Right, yeah.
So it's, it's
But let's, let's do, let's conduct this environmental scan, though, I, I think, you know, if, if council would be supportive of that, just to see what, you know, close by, because to your point, Jason, that report, you know, they, they were definitely qualified consultants, and they've got, they've made these recommendations. It is nice, though, to see what's happening, you know, in that regard, in our neighborhood as well, so I think. So if I could have a, maybe a motion from council to ask staff to, I guess I would call it in, to conduct an environmental scan of fire services?
Rates.
Rates, thank you.
Or like the administration of, like, I just feel like I want to be like really specific, maybe, so I'd make a motion, but I'd like it to be specific to say in regards to the administration of a single rate system?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so the motion is to conduct an environmental scan, to investigate
Administration.
The administration or
Single rate.
Right.
Is the administration of a single rate model.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. And so that's made by Deputy Warden and seconded by Councilor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion on that?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thanks very much. All right, so the next item on the agenda is under correspondence, we have several grant requests to review this evening, councilors, and the packages were provided in advance and circulated. So the first one is from the Lordways Men's Club. They are seeking a sponsorship grant fund of five hundred dollars. And the memo from staff indicates that the application is complete and ready to be addressed by council, so so that piece of due diligence and the building up of the application is already done, so thank you, Jason, for your work on that. And, so any discussion on this item? And this, I should mention specifically, this is for a Christmas dinner to be held in December to people who are over sixty-five years of age in the area, and the area, I think identified was Rockdale to
Yeah, Rockdale to Grand River.
Grand River.
Yeah, and just to be specific, it's free of charge for seniors.
Free of charge.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's great, that's, that's awesome, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hats off to the Lordways Men's Club for for doing that.
So, if councilors are in favor of approving this grant, then I guess I'd look for a motion, and I guess Councilor Brent Sampson, it's in your district, so I don't know if you want to have any comments?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve this grant for the five hundred dollars, and that can come out of the District Five district funds.
Okay. Okay. So the motion is to support the five hundred dollar request from District Five Grant Funds. Could I have a second on that?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Councilor Digden? Any further discussion?
Question?
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, the next item on our agenda is, is a grant request from the Bidabah Partnership Society. So, there's, information has been provided, and again, our due diligence by staff has been completed, and they feel that this grant is ready to be addressed by council, so thanks again, Jason. So the, the type of grant is under Regional Health in General for two thousand dollars, and is specifically related to Richmond County's participation in Bidabah since two thousand and one, which, and Bidabah is an organization that seeks to actively engage in preserving the Badorua Lakes for future generations to enjoy as their birthright. The annual fees, so my understanding, and I guess I should get clarification from staff on this, my understanding is that we have supported this financially year after year
Yeah.
at this rate, okay.
It was on the funding contribution list, I think, at budget time, but we had removed it, I think, at that time, am I remembering that?
If I look at the system, it looks like that we've given them twenty-five hundred dollars in fiscal twelve, thirteen, twenty-five hundred in fourteen, fifteen, and twenty-five hundred in fifteen, sixteen.
Oh.
So we haven't contributed since fifteen, sixteen.
Oh, okay.
Oh, we have not, okay.
We have contributed.
Last year.
Okay, great, all right, thank you. So the fee is, the, the two thousand dollar fee request is an annual fee that was set for each participating partner, is how they, they have they've described it here, it was established fifteen years ago, I guess it used to be twenty-five hundred, but now it's a two thousand, and it continues to fuel the work of Bidabah. And it does enable them to, to continue their, their ongoing work on the watershed, so I'm not sure if there are any, any discussion or questions from councilors on this? Okay. So I can tell you that, you know, I recently attended a meeting of Bidabah, so this, this organization is chaired by former Councilor Shirley McNamara, who I believe is there, rather, on our, on our behalf of Richmond County, and we thank her for her service on that committee for sure. It has close ties to both the Badorua Lakes Biosphere Reserve Association and SEPI. And I'm, I'm very new to it, so I'm just getting my feet wet, but some of the background, I guess, I wanted to provide. So, would councilors be supportive of this application, or?
So do they, like, there's information here in terms of, like, in terms of their budget about web hosting and about, you know, different, different things, but I'm not seeing like an event or something, so do you know specifically what they what they do to promote the Badorua Lakes Biosphere?
Yeah, so they've done, they've done, you know, from my understanding is kind of, like I said, I'm, I'm new, but from my understanding, it's like, sort of education research-based, there's advocacy work.
Good.
I know that they've had a student who is doing some kind of video capture from around the Badorua Lakes, from around the Badorua Lakes to kind of, you know, instill that sense of, you know, what, what does the Badorua Lakes kind of mean to you, and how important it is to, to our environment and our economy and all that, so. Yeah, so that's the type of work that they engage in, and I, you know, they're very well represented by, with First Nations communities on board, as well as municipalities. And they do, I should mention, they, they have, they have had the benefit of employing several youth interns as well, which I think has been really great in terms of environmental stewardship. So, any question, or any other discussion from council? So, any question or any other discussion from council on this? Are councillors?
No, I can.
Yeah?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, just, do we need a motion to accept the uh?
Yeah, if you, if you so choose, yeah.
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 So I'd be willing to make a motion at this time to uh proceed with the, I guess, the funding of two thousand dollars for.
From the, from just the regional?
From just their regional fund, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion from councillor Digden to support the two thousand dollar grant request for Bidabah from our regional fund. Is there a second on that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thanks councillor Sean Sampson. Any further discussion?
Question.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thanks very much, everyone, okay. So next item on the agenda is a review of checks issued from October twenty twenty-one. Were there any questions uh from council regarding the checks issued? Okay, so I'm not hearing any questions from council regarding checks issued, so I'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is a review of action items from October twelfth, uh, twenty twenty-one, Committee of the Whole Meeting. Um, I do want to update council that uh the Act and collectively expression of interest was submitted on November first, and I want to thank uh, very publicly thank Dorothy Bernard for her assistance on that, on pulling it all together. Um, so now we're just wait and see, so we can mark that one complete. Yvonne, thank you. Um, any other questions on the action items or comments? Okay, so hearing none, I'm going to move us on, and the next item is items added to the agenda, so uh councillor Sean Sampson, you had added uh Remembrance Day awareness.
Yeah, so uh, of course, we all know that that is our last meeting uh before November eleventh, uh on Thursday. So uh, just uh, you know, I know it goes without saying that all of us here and hopefully all of Richmond County uh will uh will take the time to uh to honor over the hundred thousand soldiers and and veterans that that lost their lives for us, and then, so, you know. Also to uh take a minute to remember the fallen and thank those that that remain. And to also show support for the ones that are currently serving in in our home and abroad, so. Uh, so I just wanted to bring that up. Also wanted to uh state that uh last year we had brought up the road conditions and closure of roads and whatever, so. Uh, for me, uh, looking at the Irish Shat Legion, uh, I will be having uh signs on both sides of the legion, stating that there's going to be ceremonies taking place uh just for the traffic to slow down, right, so. And also, uh, I want to thank uh the ATV Almedan Bikers Association. Uh, they're going to be on both sides of the four-wheeler uh ATV trails. Uh, because last year, uh, because of COVID, there wasn't that much traffic, so people were kind of unaware. And during the ceremonies, there's an ATV that passed. Again, I don't think there was any ill will there, but uh, the ATV Riders Club has has, you know, kind of offered to be on both sides to make sure that doesn't happen this year, right, so. Just want to bring that uh, bring that to the public and hopefully that, yeah, things run smoothly this year. Thank you.
That's great, thank you councillor Sean Sampson, that's a nice gesture by the ATV group, and I know that there will be ceremonies taking place throughout the county. Um, starting, I think, towards eleven o'clock, um, COVID has changed how we're going to honor Remembrance Day this year, um, you know, and many, many of the uh the indoor ceremonies are are closed to the public, but sort of more for executives, so I would just encourage members of the public to check before you kind of show up at the door, um, but certainly uh would encourage people to show up at at the Senatafs in our county to recognize um Remembrance Day ceremonies. I do also want to mention that today is actually Nat, uh Indigenous Veterans Day in Canada. And, you know, First Nations, anyway, and Métis service members have fought and died for our country for over a hundred years, and uh in my research on Remembrance Day activities, I I found this today, and it was news to me, I didn't know we we honored a day for Indigenous Veterans Day in Canada, so um, that was a learning for me, and I wanted to share it with you folks this evening as well, so. Any other comments on uh Remembrance Day? Okay. So hearing none, um, I've, I guess the next item on the agenda, so thank you councillor Sean Sampson for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a congrat, a congratulations message um for a local Richmond County resident who was um conferred uh an honorary degree from CBU this past weekend, um, local businessman Edgar Sampson was a recipient, as well was Chief Leroy Denny from Eska Zoni. Uh, they both received honorary degrees from CBU this last weekend. And every year, by awarding honorary degrees, CBU acknowledges individuals who work tirelessly to positively impact the world around them. Not only are the honorary honorary degrees a powerful way of welcoming new individuals to the CBU alumni, um, but they're also a great way to say thank you, but, and further, they serve as an inspiration for the next generation of students to strive for greatness, and I think that's my, that's my favorite part of the whole, of the whole system. Um, for those who are not, uh, who don't know Chief Denny, he's uh, from Eska Zoni, is a CBU alumni, and is a strong advocate with for education, with a passion for the true revitalization of the Mi'kmaq language, and he does a great deal of work in that regard. And of course, here in Richmond County, um Edgar Sampson is a extremely well-known Acadian Nova Scotian who grew up here. Uh, he and his business partners developed Premium Seafoods in nineteen eighty-four, a business that would go on to employ hundreds of community members over the years and has significantly impacted the local economy. So I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate both Chief Denny and uh Mr Sampson on the significant acknowledgement of their contributions to our communities. Any questions or comments on that?
Yeah, I mean, uh, for me, Madam Morton, I mean, I'm, I'm where I'm at in the sales industry, twenty-eight years in uh because of Edgar Sampson and the late Brian Sampson and and Premium Seafoods. Uh, so I mean, I don't, I don't think anyone can ever question the impact that Edgar Sampson's had on this community in this county. And and, you know, for Edgar being such a public figure, most of everything he does is 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 in the public, in the public's eyes, uh, so. Uh, but on many occasions, uh he gives to uh members of this community, and he gives to groups in this community anonymously. So uh, you know, for me, uh, when you, when you see that of a person, uh to me, a true leader in a community, uh uh does things for intention. He doesn't do it for attention, you know, so that to me is a, is a true leader, right, and I just want to congratulate Edgar and Chief Leroy Denny for the recognition.
Okay, thank you. All right, well said. Quiet contribution. It can be very meaningful.
Very excellent.
Um, okay, so any other questions or comments on that? All right, uh, so I'll move us on to the next item on the agenda, which is um request for a letter of support from the Straight Area Chamber of Commerce for a low-carbon communities educational grant. And uh, I'll apologize to councillors for including this last minute on the agenda, um, but I just, I only received it Sunday evening. And I know that their deadline for application is um is before our next regular council meeting, so I did want to make sure to to get it in here. Um, so just to give you a little background, the purpose of this project is to assist the Strait of Cancel region to explore different facets of offshore wind power technology and to learn about the planning, design, and development of offshore wind energy projects. The goal is to have broader community stakeholders gain an understanding of the regulatory, mechanical, technical, and environmental aspects of renewable wind power generation, including the emerging technologies in the area, and to be able to identify, to discuss the feasibility, economic, and cost benefit of the emerging industry as it relates to the Strait of Cancel region and Nova Scotia. So specifically, project deliverables that they're looking to achieve with, you know, in this application for funding is uh to collect expertise and research on strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats specific for an offshore wind energy sector in Nova Scotia. Um, they are interested in doing community presentations to municipal units, First Nations, Straight Area Mayors and Wardens Committee outlining the potential challenges of the industry. And they would like to host a symposium on renewable energy, offshore wind energy in Port Hawkesbury in March twenty twenty-two, targeting a hundred and fifty business and community stakeholders with potential presenters from Forests, Marine Renewables, Canada, et cetera. And the outcome of the symposium would be uh sort of a a response in shaping a strategy on how to proceed with development opportunities, how maybe or if to proceed with uh development opportunities, and um, one of the reasons that this piqued my interest, of course, is because we have in the past um provided you know, our support for uh the Breszo Energy Project, and of course, you know, with the caveat that, of course, environmental um, you know, uh, conditions would need to be met as per the provincial and federal regulations. Um, but however, in the meantime, we have also received a letter of concern from the Richmond County Inshore Fisheries uh Group to uh, you know, to to indicate that, you know, they are, they have some concerns about this type of project uh, or this type of development on the life cycle of lobsters in the area, and so I think research into the field is is more than prudent in that regard. So um, I guess I'd just open this for discussion at this stage, if councillors would like to um to give, I guess, a sense of whether or not you would support writing a letter of support for the project for the application, sorry. Any comments?
Yeah, so um, I guess, excuse me, I would uh I I would be on board, I think, for uh supporting the uh, the the letter, if um, so, correct me if I'm wrong, or did you just, are they willing to put on a a public um I guess, event or?
Yeah, that's what they're suggesting.
Information session for, so yeah, I I think that's great, if uh, you know, if that's what we need to do first to get, you know, even the local inshore fishermen some knowledge and ourselves some knowledge, then it's great to see somebody come and put on the the event, you know, it'll give us some background information on.
Yeah, and I think.
I guess I'm, I'm in, I'm, like, I'm okay with the, supporting the letter in retrospect that it is to bring them here for some.
Yeah. Okay, um. Yep, they do, they do talk about coming specifically to speak with municipalities, and I think, you know, that research piece that works both ways, right? That, you know, we can benefit from the the information that experts in the field will bring, but, you know, I think the developers can benefit from the local knowledge that our, uh, that that some of our folks would have as well, so. Any other discussion? Okay, so if there's no opposition to providing a letter of support, then uh perhaps I'll ask for a motion to to do so, to provide a letter of support for the low-carbon communities educational grant funding to the chamber.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you councillor Digden. Can I have a second on that motion? I'll second. Thank you Deputy Warden. Any further discussion?
We probably need to put something in the motion that you would be, because you you're going to be looking to issue this letter before we have regular council meeting and approve the committee, the whole report. So I think we've done this in the past, I just can't remember how we had to word that in the motion, so.
So what I've done is I've written a letter of su, a letter, but that basically says that at a Committee of the Whole Meeting, the councillors agreed to provide a letter of support, and this is what the motion said, and then we anticipate that being ratified in November, yeah, later in November.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion is carried. All right, so this brings us to our question period, so we have a fifteen-minute open question period, not restricted to items on the agenda, we will let uh the phone lines stay open, um, you can call nine oh two 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 six nine eight eight five if you have questions uh for council. So we'll just give that a minute. While we're waiting for the phone to ring, um, I'm just going to sneak in a quick little extra thank you to Tellil for providing us with mics on such short notice, so we uh, we appreciate your support. Um, and uh, and I think it makes a, it makes a big difference in terms of people being able to uh to hear us uh when we're doing our live streams, so um, so our our mic system here is not currently working, the one in-house, so we've got these uh, these pieces from Tellil, so thank you very much, Becky and Nick. Okay, so I'm not hearing the phone ringing, so I think we'll bring a question period to a close, and I don't have items uh for in camera, so I'll accept a motion to adjourn at this point.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you councillor. Can I have a second?
Come on.
I'll second them.
Thank you councillor Brett Sampson.
It's always, it's always his job, he's the furthest one away, so it's his job to do.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. And those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thank you very much, everyone, and thanks to those tuning in from home.